Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Sprague School, the Waterbury Board of Education Workshop this evening. We'd like to begin our meeting tonight with a silent prayer. And I'd ask everybody to remember President Bush, who passed away, and our sympathy and condolences to his family and friends, and remind ourselves what a great democracy we have, and to respect the office of the presidency and our freedoms. Thank you. If you please stand, and we'll pledge allegiance to the floor. Flag, I mean. Commissioner Sweeney, please lead us. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I know we're in for a big treat tonight with our students. We have our principal, Diane Bakewell. And is it Stephanie?
Yes.
Stephanie Carpenteri.
Good evening, President Brown, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners, Dr. Ruffin. Welcome to Sprague School. Before we get started, I'd like to take a moment to recognize the staff members that are here from Sprague tonight, along with the many parents who are here to show their support for Sprague. So, a big thank you to them. If the staff members could stand, please. Thank you. And on this side here, those are all our Sprague parents, and I thank you all for coming tonight to bring your children. They are the parents of the students that are in the chorus, grades four and five.
Thank you all very much.
We do have a special treat for you tonight. Our chorus students, under the direction of Mrs. Katie Colan, our music teacher, they are going to sing some holiday songs for you as they're preparing for our winter concert here for the families. But before we do that, I just have a short PowerPoint presentation, just to let you know some of the things that are happening here at Sprague. So, we have begun some work around restorative practices. That was a district initiative last year at the end of the school year. And we have implemented circles. And those morning circles take place in pre-K through grade five. It's part of our block schedule, so every morning between 8:05 and 8:25, the students are getting together with their teacher and their classmates, and they are building a sense of community in their classroom. During that time, myself and Stephanie are available, and we're around in the classrooms, taking part in the circles also. It's a great opportunity for the teachers to learn the personal interests of their students. And it's a good time for students to learn about their classmates and their interests. And it's a great way for the students to make friends, and it's certainly a positive way to start their day. As you walk into the classrooms, now that we've been in school for three months, you could feel that family-like community in the classroom, and that's what we were striving for. And we're happy that the students are getting along with one another, and we feel that the circles have really helped with that. Next, whoops, we're going backwards. Okay. So, we have some referral data here that I'd like to show you. As we're building these classroom communities, we're also trying to build a strong, positive school community. December 1st of last year, we had 53 office referrals and 36 suspensions. Now, December 1st, 2018, we have had 29 office referrals and only three suspensions.
That's amazing.
It is amazing, and we're very happy. And we could feel the sense of community in the building this year. And we'd like to say that it has a big part to do with the district initiative around the restorative practices. So, it's a great feel, and we know that the students love taking part in it, and we're looking forward to it continuing. Another piece of the restorative practice that we're using is our questioning strategies. All of our staff members have these on their badges, and there are different questions to ask students when issues do arise. And it just, basically, we want the students to understand that we want them to restore their relationship with the student that they had the issue with. We're not looking just for a punishment or a consequence. We want them to restore what happened. And some of the questions that we ask the students, "What did you think when you realized what happened? What's been the hardest thing for you since that happened? What do you think needs to happen to make it right? What have you thought about since the incident happened?" So, they're very thought-provoking questions. We've had great luck with it. The students are very open and honest with one another, as opposed to just asking, you know, "Why did you do that?", and offering a punishment, and they go on their way. We're restoring the relationship. And one other piece that I'd like to share with you tonight is around parent involvement. I'm happy to say that this year, we have established our first PTO. And we have our monthly meetings planned out for the rest of the year. We do have a president, who is one of our parents, and one of our teachers was voted in as secretary. We have started our meetings. We started right away in September, and we had our first event this past Saturday. We had a visit with Santa on a Saturday morning, and we had 75 families that came, and we had parents that helped. And once the parents arrived and realized this was the work of the PTO, they were very excited to hear that, and were asking, "When's the next meeting? I want to be there and offer my help." So, our next meeting is next Tuesday night, so we're hoping that we have many parents that join us. We also have our Governance Council, which has been continuing here. This year, we have five teachers, and we have two parents. We did end the year with five parents, but their terms were up, so that's why we're down to two. But I will say that the parents that left Governance said, "Oh, we don't want to leave. We're going to join PTO." So, now they're on PTO with us, so they're still around, and we will continue to recruit as many parents as we can. Our community member for our Governance Council is the House of Prayer, which is right down the road here on Thomason Avenue. We continue to have our monthly events that brings our families together. They include open house. Back in September, we had 157 parents at that. We had an international night, which is always a big hit here. It's a potluck dinner, and we had 117 families join us. Just this past November, we did Bingo with School Lingo, so we mix a little bit of fun with a little bit of education for the parents around attendance and M-Class and Lexia, and we had 75 families that came out that night. And last night, we held 188 parent conferences. So, we were very busy here last night, and we were happy with the turnout. So, we will continue to work with our Governance Council and our PTO so that we're headed in the right direction. So, if you have any questions, I could answer those, and then we can call our students up to the stage. I know they're excited, waiting.
We can't wait for the concert.
Okay.
Did you have a question? Dr. Ruffin has a question.
Okay. I don't have a question as much as I want to thank you and commend you for your leadership and the intentionality of implementing restorative practices, as well as you have some evidence that really speaks to you and your staff, your students, your parents, and the community that are really vested in making a difference for children. And I so appreciate that, and just wanted to commend you on that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So, our chorus members are in fourth and fifth grade.
I hope you all can hear me. I'm Mrs. Colan. Our next, that was, it's a holiday of music. Our next song is "I Feel Like Fa La La." Our next song is going to be "Hallelujah", the version in front track, sometimes heard a little bit from the Pentatonix. This is definitely the chorus's favorite song. As you can hear, they're right now, they're all excited.
That was delicious.
Um, thank you. Thank you all for that. That was one thing I listened to all summer with my four-year-old. And my four-year-old sings it too, so. Our last song is a song I've been teaching in the district for 12 years. It is a song that I have done with every chorus I've done here. I've tried to shake it, and it just keeps on coming back. And it wouldn't be a concert without it. The fifth graders get to audition for reindeer roles. It's Glitson's Boogie. We don't sing Rudolph here. We sing Glitson. And he's a little bit of a jazzy dude. And honestly, the chorus is really amazing. They were supposed to, the dancers dance down here in front for our concert, so we're going to move the kids back, and they're going to do it onstage for you. So, enjoy. Thank you all for coming here. Thank you all aboard of that.
You know, pastor or dancer, dancer or mixer, common Cupid Donner, but do you, do you know listen? Do you know listen? He's a boogie-boogie reindeer, and he boogies all day. You know, pastor or dancer, dancer or mixer, common Cupid Donner, but do you, do you know listen? Do you know listen? He's a boogie-boogie reindeer, and he boogies all day. He's some kind of cool when the season is due. He boogies a lot while he pulls on his sleigh. He's some kind of fine and his moves are divine. He boogies a lot with the rhythm he's got. You know, pastor or dancer, dancer or mixer, common Cupid Donner, but do you, do you know listen? Do you know listen? He's a boogie-boogie reindeer, and he boogies all day. He's a boogie-boogie reindeer, and he boogies all day. But he's a boogie-boogie reindeer, and he boogies all day. Do you know listen? Yeah!
How innocent they are. I miss babies, I know. They're so cute. All right, we're going to begin in about three minutes, give people a chance to settle. And thank you again, everyone, for sharing your talented students, and Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everyone. I think the high schools are doing it, right? I do, I do, I do think the high schools are doing it. I don't know. I thought they were. I thought one teacher was doing it anyway. In my, when we were at Williams, the teacher at Williams said she does it with her kids, so I assumed it was at the school.
It's around all over the district?
Yes, but this is different levels of the competition. I mean, those staffs.
That's impressive.
That's very impressive.
And we need to talk.
All right, if we could have Judge Mosley and his students get ready. Come on up, and we'll wait a few minutes, but if you could get ready to present.
Why don't you, Liz, say Granville.
Rainville Academy, yes. Not Rainville.
Yes.
Grayville.
Granville.
Granville.
Yeah.
Granville.
That's what they answered to.
I mean, that's what she said. Do you want to bring up Janice now? The superintendent's report. Well, we don't have one on this particular agenda.
Judge Mosley, do you need another mic?
Uh, yes.
She'll fit it in.
Tom? Can we use one of the mics?
Well, they're more than that.
No, no, I'm talking about his mic. Oh, I forgot, public speaking. Did we have any?
No problem.
Oh, thank God.
Should we go ahead?
I'm just going to wait until we get, if we could have a little quiet, please? We're going to continue the meeting. Thank you. It's a hard act to follow, Judge Mosley.
But the show must go on. It must go on. And they're ready.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education. Thank you for being with us. We look forward to your presentation.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Education for allowing us to come down this evening, because I know you have a heavy agenda. And a special thanks to Karen Harvey, who invited us. We appreciate it. There's a certain amount of nostalgia that I have, because for 10 years, I used to be here at every single meeting. It was a labor of love and joy, at least most of the time. I'd like to give some kudos to the new superintendent. I'd like to give some kudos to the new superintendent. Everything I've heard about her has been fantastic. And my interaction with her has been extremely positive. Uh, I want to thank her for helping us out with that career fair. We had a career fair at Willby and Career High School, and it went very, very, very well. And uh, Dr. Ruffin was there most of the time. And also, I want to give kudos to Dr. Baker, if she's still here. I would give kudos to Dr. Baker, because Dr. Baker and also Ms. Davis, Jackie Davis, and the principal of Willby, Mr. Edwards, and Lou Padua really helped put it on. So I want to thank them. And hopefully in the spring, we could bring those doctors back and do every high school. At the high school, Dr. Carl Reed, who is a PhD, brought his book and a great presentation. I have to tell you briefly, this book is the secret sauce for youngsters doing well in college and in life. Everything I've learned in my 72 years is in this book. It's a great guy, no, I'm serious, it's a great guide to being successful in college and in life. And I know all our students are reading it and they're doing essays on it. And I recommend making sure the high school students get a taste of the book. Uh, I'm not gonna talk long. Oh, in regards to Dr. Reed, he is the executive director of NESBI. NESBI stands for the National Society of Black Engineers. Every year, they have a conference. Over 12,000 high school and college students of color. And every contractor from Google to Apple to Tesla, General Motors, they're all there. And this year is gonna be in Detroit. And hopefully, we don't get enough money to take our youngsters, so they will be exposed to all those contractors. I'm going to turn it over now. Uh, one of our advisors, a young lady that works with us, is a terrific English teacher at English, uh, English teacher at Kennedy High School, Diana Lawrence. And she's gonna take it from here and introduce these students.
Hello, good evening, and thank you for having us here. I am pleased to introduce you guys to my seniors at Kennedy High School. We have with us this evening Ashley Cora, Aaliyah Appleby, and Erin Lamar. Um, and they represented Kennedy for the college tour. And they're going to tell you a little bit about the wonderful experience they had there.
Hi, I am, my name is Jaden Lawrence, and I go to Waterbury Career Academy, and I'm a junior. This year, I participated in Granville, in the Granville College Tour. At first, I was very reluctant to go, just because I didn't want to get behind in school. But at the end of the day, I appreciate my mother for encouraging me to go and experience this great opportunity. Although this was a great college experience, there were some parts that I especially liked and some that I did not. The colleges that we visited were as follows. VSU, St. Augustine, Shaw University, NC State, Duke University, NCCU, UNC, and lastly, NCANT. VSU felt very welcoming, and the students seemed like they enjoyed the school. I would very much consider this college. It appeared to be very diverse and large, but not too large. I liked how we actually walked around the campus and saw all of what it had to offer. The next college we went to was St. Augustine. I absolutely did not like this college. I felt it was very rundown and outdated. We talked to some of the students and they even recommended us not to apply to this college. Once they said that, I knew this college was off the list. Shaw University was one of my favorites on the trip. As I was walking around campus, it kind of felt as if I were home there. And some of the students even spoke to us about their college experiences. When I got home from this trip, I reviewed my notes and saw that they had a major that I could possibly be interested in. NC State felt like a city inside of another city. This is the largest university in the state of North Carolina. The campus was absolutely huge. But the fact that we didn't get to go on an actual tour was a letdown. The ne- the next college that we went to, Duke, everyone was excited for. We all thought that we were going to be able to tour the campus, walk inside, and actually buy merchandise. But we were sadly mistaken. All we did was take a bus tour around, just to take a glimpse of the campus. My expectations for this college were very high because it is a school, because it is a school that is known nationwide. And I wish that we could have experienced more than just a quick bus ride. My favorite three colleges on the tour were definitely NCCU, UNC, and NCANT. We took in-depth tours of all three of these campuses, and I felt that there, that was where I belonged. The environment was very calm, cool, and collective. The students seemed very enthusiastic about what college they were going to, and they also welcomed us into their space and didn't treat us as if we were outsiders. The food at these colleges was also great, especially at NCCU, when it was Fried Chicken Wednesday, with all the proper side dishes. I was thoroughly impressed. Overall, this college tour was a great experience to see what going to college was actually going to be like. Even though some of the colleges let me down, the majority of the trip was excellent. I would like to thank Granville for allowing me to participate on this trip, and I recommend anyone who hasn't gone on it to go next year. Without having gone on this trip, I wouldn't have been able to tour a college campus and speak of the likes and dislikes of this opportunity. It was a great experience, thank you.
Thank you, wow.
Good evening, I'm Erin Lamar.
Aaliyah Appleby.
And I'm Ashley Cora.
And we are the Kennedy High School contingent that went on this trip. Where do you want to go to college? How far away from home do you want to be? Are you going to be comfortable going to school in a new place? These are questions we must now ponder as high school seniors. The college tours of Virginia and North Carolina gave us a new perspective on how to choose colleges and universities, but also on legacy and pride, and why it matters where one chooses to earn a higher education. While we didn't just visit HBCUs, historically black colleges and universities, a significant part of the learning for us was about the schools that fall under this umbrella. And it was a rich experience getting the opportunity to visit their wonderful campuses. The college tour was as much a learning experience as it was a fun one. Our first destination, the HBCU Museum in Washington DC, was quite interesting. Inside its deceivingly small exterior contained nearly three centuries of African-American history. From Monty Musa being the richest man who has ever lived, to the legacy of Black Wall Street, the HBCU Museum did not spare any of the accomplishments and accolades achieved by African-Americans. We also got to learn about how many of the HBCUs were founded, who founded them, and notable alumni that proudly represented their schools.
Campuses such as Virginia State University and North Carolina A&amp;T University gave off a first-name basis kind of feeling, where students from all knew each other's name. This sense of community became important, because as we choose between many attractive options for schools, it is preferable to be more than just a number in the system. At these schools, we also had the opportunity to meet different professors who emphasized creating a student-teacher connection in order to have a more positive experience in college. At North Carolina State University, we were shocked by how big it was. But when we went to St. Augustine University, that seemed too small. Many of us realized that we were experiencing a type of Goldilocks conundrum, and that finding a college that was just the right fit would take a lot more introspection and maybe even a few more of these trips.
There were many quotes that we heard during the college tour that we found to be very important and inspiring. One quote that hasn't left my mind came from a college student at NC State University, where he said, "Until a lion has its own historian, history will only glorify the hunter." In that context, African-American history is not often told by its own people, and this skews the perspective into what our world is really like. We learned that it is essential to preserve this kind of history so that we don't lose ourselves. Another quote that had high impact was, "It is not taboo to go back and fetch that which had may been forgotten." Before this college tour, students may not have thought very much about history and legacy. But now, they become another factor to consider when making this very important life decision. Our experience with Granville Academy was more than we hoped for. We were fortunate enough to experience touring different colleges in different states to see which schools might be right for us. We met many different people and learned about the colleges and the process of applying to school. Being students of color should not be an impediment to success. And with organizations such as Granville, we, excuse me, and the experiences that they provided, such as this college tour, Waterbury students are being primed for success.
Now we have a short video. Our photographer, James McCollum, took a week off to travel with us for free. And he did a, took a lot of pictures, and he and the younger people on the show did a short video. James?
Thank you.
And then, uh, talk to other students, something that you, you don't get sitting here in the classroom. And we thank the board for allowing the kids to be able to come out and not punish them for, you know, marking the maps. And we, we appreciate all the help, you know, with, with the students.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. And, uh, we have to continue the conversation. Vice President Harvey?
Yes, I did want to say something. Thank you, students, before you go sit down. Thank you very much for your presentation. Um, I spoke with Judge Mosley and we felt that it would be good for you to get that experience to present. So, I want to thank you. Uh, we have one Waterbury Career Academy student, and then the rest of you from Kennedy. But we also had Kent Crosby that went.
And Crosby has, uh, the road.
Right.
Right.
Alright, so I want, um, hopefully we get some more students to go along. This is our first rodeo here. So, just want to thank you. And Grand Vale Academy is doing a great job. Uh, ninety percent of the students who attend Grand Vale Academy go to college. So, that's what we want. We want that and more. So, thank you very much. Let's give them another hand.
Thank you. What a great program. Um, Mary Ann Merrill and Pat Moran, item three, District Parent Engagement Report. Good evening. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Well, as you just said, we have the Family and Community Engagement Report. And I'm Pat Moran.
Mary Ann Merrill.
And we, we thought we'd put together just a little bit of the history for you. This state, where we base all of our issues and our activity on the state and federal guidelines. And the federal guidelines include the Every Student Succeeds Act. And in that, it lays out some of the criteria that we should be doing in our Family and Community Engagement Center. And then also, the state has just come out with a document with, it's called the Full, Equal, and Equitable Partnership with Families. And that has a definition, Connecticut's definition, and the framework for family engagement. And with ESSA, it's the two most important issues that we have are that we need to improve student achievement, academic achievement, and school performance. And we have to keep that at the forefront. And I have to say, it's not to say that we don't have fun when we have activities, but we also have to be sure that we have based everything on a curricular aspect that we have. In order to ensure that we do that, we have developed a family activity sheet, which is on the next page. And, um, it, excuse me, it's completed by all the parent liaisons before they have an activity. So, they tell us what the activity is, who the target audience is, uh, how it relates to the Waterbury curriculum, and it, reading language arts, math, science, social studies, and other. And then what activities have you planned? Briefly outline the sequence, what materials do you need, and how will this be assessed? And this is really a wonderful resource that we're developing because as the, as the liaisons complete these, we can put them all together. And then we have a whole compilation of what has happened within the district. And when it's time to put our reports together for the state or the federal grants, we have documentation of what's happened. And as I said, it doesn't all have to be, you know, very hard academics. I mean, we had, and one of our schools had a beautiful ice cream social. But in doing that, they were working on developing oral language and vocabulary and social relationships in and among the teachers and the students and the families. And the parents were given information on how that they can do things at home with their children. So, it, it can be done, and it can be done very easily. And another component of ESSA is that everything should be presented in a language that the parents can understand. So, we have wonderful cooperation of Adela Nelson, Jorge's department, so that everything that we have is translated into Albanian Spanish. Within the schools, any notice that goes home, or any, anything that we have to do. As far as the state definition of Full, Equal, and Equitable Partnerships with Families, um, we now have a statewide definition, so we're all speaking the same language when we get together. Family engagement is a full, equal, and equitable partnership among families, educators, and community partners to promote children's learning and development from birth through college and career. And that is really important, that we recognize, we start with the child from when the child is born, and we keep going all the way through. And then the guiding principles are here. And I think the, the biggest one, there are two that I think are, they're all very important, but two are very, very important. And that is to build collaborative, trusting relationships focused on learning, and listen to the families. And then another, to co-develop cultural competence among staff and families. That's something that we've been working on as a district. And I think we need to continue working on it. And it, we're going to get more bang for our buck once we do that, because our families will, will feel more involved. And then, in your pocket, there are four charts that the state has put out within this document that talk about what would be high impact for preschool, uh, children, what would be high impact for elementary schools, high impact for, uh, after-school programs, and high input for middle and high school. We've given these charts to all of our parent liaisons. And today, actually, they were given a huge chart that's going to be put in each school, so that it's visible. And we've also asked the parent liaisons to honestly go back in their building and look at one of those components and rate themselves. We're not going to make it public. We just want people to look and honestly say, "Oh, we do this." Well, where does that fall? Is that low impact? How can we move it so that it will become high impact? And there are a lot of areas that we are going to be connecting with, but I think it's something that, we need to get an honest appraisal of where we are, so we can find out where we want to be. And it's not something that's going to be done alone. We're going to be doing it as a team, with the principals, the teachers, the parents, the parent liaisons, everyone within the district will, will have a voice in it. And I think it's going to, it's going to make a difference for everybody. And then I listed some of the pieces, the components of the Family and Community Engagement Center that we have now. We have the FACE Office, which is on Grand Street. Every school has a PTO or a PTA. They all have school governance councils. We have the District Parent Advisory Council. And Project Love is another one that's not really known throughout the, the system. I, I'm not sure it is as well-known as it is. And that was actually started by a group of parent liaisons who saw a need with our families that are in the homeless shelters. And what could we do to, to support them and bring some joy into their, their days? And so, it's, it's all volunteers. The parent liaisons come out and volunteer. Mrs. Merrill was able to get a grant to get some money to help do this. And once a month, we have a dinner. And we, uh, use some of our grant money too, to get a bus to pick up our families at the shelter, bring them to Waterbury Career Academy. And we have dinner, we have activities and games. And it, it's really wonderful to see the families interact with each other and with, with other people. And just to have that pressure taken off for a little while. And again, we always have activities that are mindful of what can raise academic achievement and awareness of our students, but they're also fun. We have, always have a science experiment that the children do. And honestly, many times, it's the parents who really enjoy doing the science experiment as well. We have read alouds, we have math activities. We have all different things that are happening, and the parents and children can rotate through. If they don't feel like doing this one, they don't have to. But there's exposure to all these different things. And it's really a wonderful project that has, homegrown, that has developed over the years. And then, I'm not going to read this to you, but the Family and Community Engagement Center, there is a clear vision and a mission statement as to what we need to do. So, now I'm going to turn it over to Mary Ann, and she'll talk about the goals of the FACE Center.
Well, last year, um, as a group, we developed, um, a goal for the FACE Center to empower and educate families, to effectively advocate for their children, to ensure their students' academic success. And we actually, um, developed some things that we were going to do for our parents and for the center. And we actually put together a resource guide, um, that has, um, many, many resources for our families and for Waterbury. And it's about to go live very soon. Right now, it's still in a draft form. You may have some copies with you tonight, but very soon, it's going to go live. It will actually be on our website, under the parent page, um, so that our parent liaisons and our parents and everyone can access it. It will have, it has all kinds of resources, from social services, mental health, advocacy for our children, where to get rent assistance, you name it, it's in this book. And so, we thought this was a way to support our, our families in Waterbury and our parent liaisons, since they are the hub for our parents, how to most quickly access the resources that are here. And if it goes live and it's on the website, if we know a new resource, we can add to it as quickly as possible. Goal two was to access those available support services for students and families. As we said, our parent liaisons, they are the hub of support for our families. We have, uh, ongoing professional development. I've listed the professional development that they've had from September through December. And actually, um, in November, we had Leslie Carson from the state doing the restorative practices, um, information to the parent liaisons. Today, we had Deana Mortensen talking about Wonders and Study Sync, because we want our parent liaisons to always be right up to date with what's going on in our schools. When you think about what went on here tonight at Sprague School, it's kind of like a field of dreams. If you build it, they will come. Um, you saw all the parents and the families here tonight. When you cultivate a school welcoming to parents, and parents feel that they are welcomed and embraced, they will come. The children felt supported, the families felt supported, they will come. And that is what we are trying to import to our parent liaisons. Build that relationship with your parents, and that comes from the leadership in a school right on down. If your parents feel that way, they will come. Onto school governance councils. Every school in our district, except those that our program exempt, have a pair, have a school governance council right now. We did our building process in the spring. And now, including our nine, um, building, um, process schools, the recruitment, nomination, and elections have taken place. So, we are in a good place. The modules and presentations that have taken place, um, the Back to School Breakfast was a huge success in September. We had ninety people at the Back to School Breakfast. We shared achievements. Module one, um, Mr. Van Stone came to module one the other night at Crosby High School. We had really standing room only in the room. Sixty people were there. We had Attorney Rebecca Adams there to present that module to our parents. And tomorrow morning, I will be at Reed School doing a site-based training to our new members at Reed School. Module two will be in the spring, and it will be equity-based, because we are always trying to do that cultural responsive, um, education. When you think about our new Wonders program, that new reading program, there is such a perfect cultural piece in that program for our bilingual students. It is a perfect match for the Waterbury Public Schools. And so, it's going to be important for our parents to know that when we purchased that program, we were thinking about our cultural response to our students. So, our DPAC, our District Parent Advisory Council, here is the purpose, here are the goals. We are thinking all the time that it is important that we match the vision and how we have to match goals in every single thing that we do in the Waterbury Public Schools. to match goals in every single thing that we do in the Waterbury Public Schools. It's important to always have that welcoming environment. And we need to encourage individual schools to match those opportunities for our students. And last year, we, it was an important goal for Mr. Henry and Dr. Ruffin this year to make sure that we have a DPAC person in every school for this organization. We did that by May of last year. And then in September, we had the welcoming event at Veterans Hall in September. And Dr. Ruffin helped us welcome the new parents in. We gave them a PIN. We did a welcoming video showing them what the DPAC does with the programs that match our Title I programs. The next page is not very clear, but it is the DPAC calendar for this year. But I believe that you got a color print of the DPAC calendar. So, if you'd love to join us at any event, we would love to have you. Our new DPAC president, she's a go-getter. She wants to make sure things are color-coded so as parents know what they're coming to and what the focus is and if there's going to be childcare at the event. So, they know if they're bringing their children, will there be childcare? As we said, the parent liaisons, they're the link, they're the hub between the students, the teachers, the parents, and the community leaders. And we do that monthly PD for them. It's the link between the content supervisors. We've had the CREG conference in October that was great PD for them. And tomorrow, I know Pat would probably like to talk a little bit about the Friday Cafe that's going to happen tomorrow at the Manitouk Museum.
Yes, that's an, that is going to be held by the State Department of Education, Judy Carson, and a person from CREG, which is the Capital Region Education Association. And they'll be coming. And they're, we're hosting it at the Manitouk Museum. And the topic's going to be cultural competency. And it's going to be done by Shemay. I can't remember Shemay's.
Shemay Morales James.
And she's an excellent, excellent speaker. So, if any of you would like to attend, it's going to be at eight-thirty tomorrow morning at the Manitouk, and it'll be until ten-thirty. And we're just very excited that Waterbury's hosting it. And the Friday Cafes are held once a month, and every month, it's in a different city. So, so far, we've been at the New Britain Museum of Art. We've been at the Peabody Museum in New Haven last month, and this month is ours. And we're very excited to have it, especially with this topic and our own Waterbury person that's, that's going to be doing the, the presentation of it. So, as I said, if you're, if you're available, you're more than welcome to stop by.
And now, onto Portrait of a Graduate. And we know that this has been our focus and ongoing discussions with our parents, our students, our teachers, and our community partners, starting in August with our administrators. Onto October, to our Title I meeting where we had ninety parents, staff members, community members, students. November was the courageous conversation about race and education. Dr. Baker did a wonderful job for you, Dr. Ruffin imparting that information. And there was some great, with your four questions, there was great feedback from the audience. And then when we went on to November with the community conversation with all of the collaborators from the community, and then we got the feedback and all the next steps. And the information has come back and been shared. It made us proud to be members of the Waterbury community, the partnership that happened with PAL, the students from WHAMs that provided the childcare. And I, I just think it really makes us know where we're going as a group. Because this is such an important way for us to look at where we want our students to go. And when you have the students giving feedback of where they would like to go, it certainly gives us a great roadmap for the future. Mrs. Moran talked about Project Love. And when we think about our neediest families, they are our homeless families. This gives you our mission statement that was developed last June. It was such a great community partnership. And when the Exchange Club, Family Life Foundation, gave the grant to support this initiative, it is such a wonderful monthly event for our families to help them and support them with social, emotional support in a nurturing environment. The final page is the School Parent Engagement Status Report. You saw one of these in June. We've had some, four new parent liaisons who we are mentoring right now with our senior staff. School Governance, it gives you the dates of implementation. Our PTA, PTO, there's been some changes there and we're still in flux there. And then our DPAC parents, there's been some changes there. So, there was some updating there. But I think this gives you a picture of where we are and where we want to go. And parent and family and community engagement is such an important piece of supporting the academic picture for our children. And I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Moran in case she has any closing remarks.
No, I just want to say, I, I think it's very exciting. We have a lot going on. And as we talk about the Portrait of a Graduate, the whole city is abuzz about this. And I think it's, as Mrs. Merrill said, it's really important that we're getting student input and we're also getting parent input. After all, these, the parents, it's their children. They need to have input into it and we need to be cognizant of that. So, it's, it's more than just a triad of the parents, the teachers, and the students. Now, it's the parents, the teachers, the students, and our community. And I think we're getting wonderful support throughout the community for all the initiatives that we're trying to put forth. So, that's our.
Great report. Any questions from commissioners?
Comments?
I think Vice President Hart.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for this information. And as you know, I'm your liaison to DPAC and have attended, I don't know how many events pertaining to parent engagement. My question is, how do we know how effective all of these programs in terms of parent engagement? How are we measuring effectiveness of parent engagement in Waterbury?
Well, after we, after we have an event, we always have a survey that we ask parents to complete. But as you know, it's, that isn't the most accurate thing. But I think it's engaging in conversations with parents to say, you know, "How did you enjoy this? What do you think we should add in the future?" Really getting their input on, on what they feel they need or would like to have presented for them. You know, we, we have our thoughts, but we really need to listen to the families. And I think just the, the conversations are the most important part.
Okay.
I will say, the DPAC calendar this year was based on the surveys from last year. The parents last year said that they wanted I-ready, math, and special education. So, the event in November was I-ready and Khan Academy. And the March meeting is special education, which is what the parents said they want. If the parent voice says that's what they want, this is what the calendar reflected. So, we try and give them what they would like.
Okay. So, are we working on ways to improve communication with our parents? Because that's, that's what I'm hearing. I'm hearing that there seems to be some breakdown with the schools and the communication with, with parents. Flyers that are sent out or flyers that are not sent out. Have we, have we looked at that, ways to improve communication?
We are, we are looking at that. And I, I will admit, we have been a little behind the eight ball sometimes with getting the translations done. Because we really need to have it in all the languages of the parents when we send it, send it out. So, we need to make sure that we get it done in a timely fashion and it gets to the bilingual department so we can get it out. Because parents need time to plan and to know what's coming and to know all the information. Because they, they have a lot of responsibilities with their families and their time is very precious. So, we're working on doing that. Nancy Vaughn puts things up on the website.
Okay.
So, it's there. We're trying to be sure that we have a calendar. Everything goes on our district calendar. And we're working on that.
Okay. So, so I would just say, because there's just, there's a meeting I attended yesterday and after the meeting, that's what I was hearing is, is that the communication needs to be improved between the schools and the parents. So, I think when we have our parent liaison meetings, that we kind of look and see what we can do to improve that. Communication's always a tough nut to crack, but.
Absolutely.
We, we, we really need to look at that. And the parents have been talking about that for a while. So, I think when we look at effectiveness, we need to look at also how we communicate, how we get information out to our parents. We have the website. We have, you know, our, our parent liaisons. But we need to look at other ways that we can get information out to our parents.
Be a little more creative in how we.
Yeah, be creative.
Right. And also address the way parents receive communication now, social media and all these other components. We are, we've been talking about that and.
Right.
We will address that.
All right. And then lastly, I attended the CREG convention or seminar. It was really, really good. But there were a lot of parents who did not attend, who said they were. And we lost, you know, some funds as a result of that. So, I'm hoping that next year, when we put this, you know, together, that we kind of clamp down on what, you know, commitments to attend the convention and, you know, just kind of keep track of who, who's going and so that we don't lose out on, on money as a result of, you know, lack, you know, attendees not showing up.
Absolutely. And that's something that we, we recognize we have to do as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to mention that the Office of Early Childhood, and I see Maureen Bergen back there, they've started something called Remind Me. And I signed up. I love it. I get texts about the flu clinics and when school is closing. So, that may be something to look into. It's, I, I love it, Maureen. I get all the, and I think that the, yeah, right. So, and it doesn't cost anything. So, it might be something to think about.
And that's perfect.
But thank you for your hard work. We've come a long way. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Maureen, Noreen Biola, the, our money situation.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
This is the monthly report through October 2018. That's four months into this fiscal year. As you know, our approved budget was one hundred and fifty-eight million. And as you know, we needed one hundred and seventy-six million. So, as you know, we have the alliance funding along with contingencies to balance off the budget. Right now, we're showing possibly a minor surplus of five hundred and seventy-five thousand of the one hundred and seventy-six million. But as you know, that can change because we are only into the fourth month. As you know, we monitor these accounts very closely, you know, making sure if we have bumps along the way throughout the year, that we can be able to take care of that. So, that's just really the status of where we are at this point. Any questions?
Any questions? I just had one. Did, I did know that we were scheduled to receive some money from reimbursement from the state for the children we served from Puerto Rico, the hurricane.
Yes.
Did we get that money?
We did. And it was set up as a grant, yes.
Now, is.
We did. It's, we're reimbursing our expenditures from last fiscal year.
Now, is that reflective in these numbers?
No. It's not part of this, it's actually part of last year.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
All right.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yep.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think we have Supervisor Melissa Baldwin. You're up for quite a few. Five, six, seven, eight. Who do we appreciate though?
Good evening, everyone. Melissa Baldwin, Director of Special Education. I had to make sure I kept everything together. The Department of Special Education requests your approval of a contract with Pediatric Services of America for the provision of nursing services for the Waterbury School District and students with disabilities in total not to exceed six hundred and ninety, ninety, I'm sorry, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred dollars for a three-year term. The department can elect to undertake the bidding process, which we chose to do. We had five vendors submit proposals. We formed a committee. Special education supervisors, Roberta Abell, Lisa Brown, and Shayna Nath were on that committee. They looked at the vendor experience in providing services, their contract and PO experience, and their capacity to provide nurses, which PSA has done for us in the past. As required by purchasing procedures, we were, they rated them before they looked at the cost. The committee then reviewed the hourly rates submitted by each proposer. PSA did not have the highest hourly rate, but agreed to reduce their rate even further to be competitive with the other proposers. It also kept its hourly rate the same for all three years of the contract. We have obtained a, a tax clearance and is paid with general funds.
Thank you. Could I ask, in terms of the rate negotiations, is that because we're allowed to do that? Now, for some reason, I thought we weren't, we had to take the lowest bid or something is, or we don't have to do that?
We have to look at the top three. And the reason that we don't see the rates while we're going through the RFP process is so we pick up the, we pick the best vendor.
I see.
And then they don't give us the rates until we score them, one, two, three.
Okay, all right. Thanks for that clarification. Any questions on that contract? Number six.
I respectfully request that the amendment to the contract submitted between the City of Waterbury and Charles Hayden School at Boys and Girls Village be approved. The Waterbury School District has placed students at the Charles Hayden School at Boys and Girls Village, which operates a school for students with disabilities and had a contract completed with Waterbury in 2016. An amendment to the contract is necessary to increase the total amount of contract by three hundred, two thousand to cover increased tuition costs for additional students. The amendment increases the total amount of the contract from six hundred, sixty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars to nine hundred, seventy-one thousand, six hundred dollars. I appreciate your consideration in this important matter.
Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you. Good evening, Ms. Baldwin.
Good evening.
I have the same question actually for this and item number eight. I fully understand if we add additional students, certainly a supplier or a vendor can come back and say, "There's more money." What bothers me on both of these is we have a contract. And in both cases, on six and eight, they're also including a rate increase. So, I don't understand if we have a contract that still has, I think in both cases, two years, three years in one case, how they can raise their rates if we have a contract.
So, as part of the, the, the majority of the money is because there were additional students that were placed in those schools, either in this year or in past school years so that we couldn't, we, we, basically, we needed to increase the funds. The rate increase, we, we get the rates every year, once a year. We don't have the rates going out three years. They generally send them to us in, between January and June and for the next school year. It's, it's usually between one point five and three percent. And we try to plan for that, but we don't always know.
I'm not sure which contract it was. I would have to look back. I only have the agenda in front of me. One of the two definitely gave yearly rates.
Okay.
And in that case, I would have a lot of trouble giving them a rate increase if the contract states a rate by year. I can't remember which one now without opening up a different file.
Just looking at the cost of, of both of them, I, I can go back and research that for you. But the increase is, is covering students more so than any rate increase that was put in. But I can research that further for you.
I would appreciate that because.
Yeah. It's not a problem.
Times more students, that's obvious.
Right.
But if they're trying to slip in a rate increase, I, I would say we should fight that.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
That's a good point. Okay. Any other questions? The next one? Seven?
Yeah. I'm, I'm just making sure I have this right one in front of me.
Okay.
Sorry. I respectfully request that the contract between the City of Waterbury and Cooperative Education Services be approved. The contract with Cooperative, Cooperative Education Services runs from July first, 2018 through June thirtieth, 2021. 2021, with a two-year option to extend the contract. The yearly amount of the contract is up to 64,738 in year one, 67,975 for year two, and 71,374 for year three. The total amount of the contract for three years is 204,087, and it's paid by general funds, a tax clearance is completed, and I appreciate your consideration.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, next.
And last, I respectfully request that the amendment to the contract submitted between the City of Waterbury and the Jengra Center at University of St. Joseph's be approved. Waterbury School District has placed students at the Jengra Center at University of St. Joseph, which operates a school for students with disabilities, had a contract completed with Waterbury in 2016. The amendment is necessary to increase the total amount of the contract by 67,500. It increases the total amount from 795,190 to seven hun, oh, from 727,690 in the current contract. The contract one runs through June 30th, 2019, is paid by general funds. We have a tax clearance as well.
Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. Besides ditto to my other comments, when we say general funds, and we already have a budget in front of us, do we know how we're actually going to pay for that?
So the special education has a budget for out-of-district students. That did not, that changed by a little bit from last year, so it's kind of, we look at it every week, and we look at students to bring back to district, we have students that we are trying to move based on a number of factors, and we look at students that are being placed by DCF that we have to cover as well. So we don't always know exactly where we are. We know where we are financially, but we're always trying to bring kids back or put them in placements that are financially responsible for the district.
Okay, and I'm glad you said DCF, because you know my problem with DCF. Has there been any remedy that DCF placements, which we really don't get a vote on, any money coming from the state to help us cover those?
Only when it exceeds the 15,000 dollars that we, it's approximately 15,000 or 16,000 dollars. Past that, we get a, what's called excess cost back from the state, we get a certain percentage of it. What we have done when we receive DCF notifications is we're critiquing them a little bit closer, so if there's something that there's a question of residency, or if there's a parent residency issue, we're calling them right away.
Okay. I'm not sure, I think Doreen may have left. I'll bring it up again in two weeks, but if you could just check with Doreen, I know we get promises from the state, I don't know if we always get a check in the mail. So if you could check with Doreen, and I'll bring it up again in two weeks
Yeah.
When we talk about it again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks, have a good night.
Thank you. Next is number nine. Revisions to the lead screening of preschool and kindergarten children policy. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board. Everyone knows Maureen Bergen, our early childhood education supervisor. We also have Lois Mulhern from our Health Department here tonight. We are respectfully requesting revision to the Board of Ed Policy 5141.1, the lead screening of preschool and kindergarten children policy. It currently reads that all preschool students must provide an initial lead test done within a year from entry of school and thereafter annually while enrolled in a preschool program. So that would mean a child that came in at a three-year-old program would need another lead test, four-year-old program, and the state does not actually require that, and becomes a hardship for our parents to go back and get another lead test done, even though it's not required. And so right now, we would have 60 current students in that situation. The new language that we're proposing for you tonight that has gone through workshop would read, instead of the paragraph that I just read out loud, which is, guardians of preschool students must provide evidence of a lead screen test upon enrollment in compliant with Connecticut State Statute Section 19A-111G. That's all I have.
I just wanted to clarify something. So the state law does require all children to be screened at 24 months, and if that doesn't happen, then they do have to get a screen after that. But if a child is screened and lead levels are high, then they have to, then there's an intervention. So you're not talking about an intervention, you're just talking about that initial screen.
Yeah, we're up to 35 months, nine to 35 months is the initial, initial screen, but for enrollment into school, the statute, it's just that they need the test, had the test done. Right now, the way that it, the policy reads is
You have to have
We're asking them to come back annually, to go annually to get a lead screen test, and it's really crossing into the Department of Public Health.
So this just complies with the state law?
Correct.
Okay. And I have to say, I did look up at your website, Lois, you've done a Herculean job of really trying to, we've got 4,382 students who are diagnosed with, we're talking about asthma, I'm sorry, I wanted to go on to the asthma, are we finished with the lead?
Yeah, just very briefly, I, we bought, this came to committee, to Legislative and Policy Committee, and we brought it here with the intent to make sure that we got the actual legislative language. We did receive that. I also supplied the Office of Legislative Research's explanation for the Legislative Act, which makes it a little clearer, and clearly, it does, the definition only defines that first test. And certainly, school personnel and public health personnel have the ability within that legislation to identify students who are exhibiting symptoms that may be lead-related to be able to make those referrals, but they do not need to be required to test more than once.
Yep. Any other questions? I know I did have a conversation with Richard Lee today at the Health Department, and there's some great programs going on, so we should have a conversation, make sure that our parents are aware of it, you know, and that, because the Health Department has a lot of resources, so we're very grateful for that. But while I have you, Lois, I did want to commend you for the work you're doing on addressing asthma. And as I said before, 4,332 students are identified with asthma in our school district, and I really want to thank you and the Health Department, and Joe Gorman, I see down there. The Wellness Committee, our District Wellness Committee, has identified asthma as a priority to try to really help the students. So thank you very much for the work you're doing, and we look forward to continuing it. So thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Committee on Policy and Legislation, is this you, Ann, you want to do the next one? Ann is doing number 10? Okay?
So the committee also looked at the, there's an issue with, we have four policies that all discuss makeup work upon students' return to school from an extended absence. And one policy mentioned it as five days, the other three policies mentioned that work needed to be returned within 10 school days. The request had originally come through to just make them consistent and make them 10 school days. Dr. Ruffin was at our meeting, and discussion ensued about what was it really, an appropriate time frame to make up, to do, for a student to turn in makeup work after an absence? And Dr. Ruffin and the committee agreed with her that 10 days seems excessive. So we are now proposing that all, that the language of the four policies affected all be amended to say, to designate that makeup work must be returned within five school days of students' return to school. So I thought that given that that's a change in what was actually occurring in the district, because what was occurring in the district was 10 school days, that we needed to make sure that we give students and parents some heads up on this. So that discussion going on tonight, possibly getting some word out to our parents in particular on our website, whatever, that this is coming, and possibly looking at this to be ready for January 1, when students return after the holidays. So that would be my suggestion.
Any questions or comments? I just wanted to ensure, what is our, is there a policy about teachers' responsibility of giving the children the homework assignments? I mean, are the students getting the assignments in a timely manner?
Yep, and we also had that discussion, discussion at the committee level, and we agree with Dr. Ruffin that that's an administrative
Okay, so
Issue, and Dr. will, Dr. will address it, but I will tell you that back in the 1980s, when my children were in school, it was an issue too. I complained about the same thing. So it seems to be a recurring issue, I don't know systemically what could be done to make sure that all of our teachers understand that their responsibility is to have, it's parents' responsibility to make sure they get the makeup work, but it is the teacher's responsibility to make sure it's available.
Okay. I think that'll be on our radar. Great. Any questions? We're good, okay. Number 11, use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. Number 12, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests. Superintendent, I'm sorry, Vice President?
You went to a little bit quickly. The reservations of school facilities, I saw that we had the legislative breakfast, excuse me, legislative dinner.
Dinner on the 11th, yeah.
Okay, and so I, this is a point to ask, do we have an agenda?
Not yet.
And if not, when, will we get that so that we can review it?
Absolutely.
Before the meeting?
Yep.
Do we know when we'll get it?
It's in the works.
Okay, because
I don't have a specific date, I know we're working on it, I talked to Margaret during the week and Dr. Ruffin, so we should have it by tomorrow or latest Monday.
Okay, thank you.
And if you had, if any commissioners, I think the notice went out, if you had anything you wanted.
I submitted mine, and I didn't get any response or anything, so I did submit my topics.
Okay.
So
I'm sure, I'm sure they're looking at it. Okay. Superintendent's update to the Board, and I thought you had a couple of announcements. Okay, all right. There's no executive session?
There is.
Oh, there is an executive session, so, a quick one, okay. After, right?
Motion to convene into executive session for discussion.
Don't you have something?
Yeah.
The superintendent has something.
Oh, okay.
I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce Dr. Janice Epperson. When she was hired and introduced to the Board due to flight delays, we weren't able to officially meet her then, but she's been at work for an entire week, and then she came back the second week, so I'd like to introduce Dr. Janice Epperson as our Assistant Superintendent.
All right. Welcome. If you'd like to just say a few words and
Read us.
We're sorry, your luggage got lost, you got lost, no, I'm only
Flight delayed, and missed the connector, and then lost my luggage, and stopped to get clothes to try to make the reception toward the end. I do bring you greetings from a warmer Tennessee state. Glad to be here, I've been here since November the 26th, actually working, but I've been in Waterbury since November the 11th, trying to get acclimated to a lot of different things, and just trying to bring forth what I know about education to help the rest of the team, and to just say thank you for allowing me to have this opportunity to be with the district.
Thank you very much, and welcome.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Additionally, I did share with the members of the Board a copy of the Superintendent's Evaluation Instrument. I'd like to refer briefly, you have a copy of that. We may not need to discuss it thoroughly tonight, but I would like to at least go over a couple of things that I would like to share with you. One, if you will look at the draft copy that says draft, Superintendent's Performance Goals with Measures, there are eight specific goals and descriptors that fall under professional practice, or student learning, district improvement, as well as other goals. And underneath each one of those, there are specific measures that Board members, I would like to ask that you look at those and review those, and maybe on an individual basis, if you will give me a call or maybe visit with me, we could discuss what those are, and if you have any additions or you have some feedback that you would like to provide for me, I'm very open to that. Those, the copy that you received that does not say draft is actually the very same document. It speaks about the Superintendent's Performance Goals, the professional practice, the student learning, the district improvement, as well as other goals, but they do not include all of the different measures that you could use to give me feedback and to provide an opportunity for me to continue to develop and to provide all of the expected outcomes for the district. The following pages of the evaluation tool is actually an evaluation that I hope responds to a comment that I heard you make when I was hired, which was the current evaluation that was used for Superintendent was a little challenging in terms of being able to determine whether Superintendent would, how to measure it, or what kind of expectations, and what did that look like in terms of, what's the evidence, and how do I know that this really occurred? I'm hoping that this evaluation will provide some of that. The first performance standard is instructional leadership, and at the very bottom of that page, this will be page three of eight, you will see that there are specific examples. They're not all inclusive, there are several other things that I'm sure that I could bring to the table, but they do give a list of, how would I, how would you know as a Board member that I have done these things, and what the evidence might look like. So under instructional leadership, that could include goals and progress report, analysis of any walkthroughs or instruments, and feedback that I might give to principals and to my leadership staff, analysis of staff evaluation, any student feedback. Those are concrete examples of how I may be able to provide those to you, that you could then give me feedback on the instructional leadership component of my evaluation. The second standard is management and operations. Again, at the very bottom, some specifics as to what I might bring to the table to provide to you, so that you could see some evidence of the work that I have done. The third performance standard is family and community engagement, and again, at the very bottom with some specific evidence. The fourth standard is professional culture, and again, at the very bottom, it allows for some specific examples of how that might be demonstrated. The page seven allows Board members to be able to determine individually as well as collectively the performance areas that have either been successfully met or not met. And the rating ranges from did not meet to some progress, to significant progress, or to met, or to exceed. And then, of course, the very final page allows a compilation of all of those scores to be rated into an actual evaluation score, so to speak. The other page that you have in the package that was presented to you is the Superintendent's Evaluation Process and Timeline. Again, of course, July and September, spent a significant amount of time, you know, with the leadership team, but certainly not completed with that, because we're still in the process of getting to know in the process of getting to know each other and hiring staff. But definitely, that is ongoing, as well as I've set some professional goals and objectives. I met with Commissioner Brown today just to briefly, yesterday, to briefly discuss the evaluation tool. But our next opportunity together would be the mid-year evaluation meeting, at which time Board members and myself would actually discuss any progress and any feedback that you would like to give me. In subsequent meetings in April and May, of course, is the end of the evaluation year meeting, and then, of course, the Board evaluates me in May and June. And then in June, there's actually a meeting with me to discuss the evaluation draft, and then I'm formally evaluated in June of 2019 for the first time. Certainly, I went over this very quickly. I'd just like to, to just introduce it to you. Perhaps you'll have some feedback to give to me. I certainly hope that you do, and, and then we could discuss it further at the, at the Board meeting, or individually, I would really prefer, at, at some point, to have a dialogue with all 10 of you before this becomes official.
Thank you very, very much, and I think you've really responded to the comments of the Board during your, during the interview process, but I know the bottom line is that we wanted a fair evaluation that was based on empirical data and not based on a person's feeling for someone, or, you know, kind of a personality kind of thing. So I think the Board really should look at this with that in mind. How can we evaluate based on empirical data and based on evidence? And I look forward to really learn, you know, reading this and, and, and I, I, your feedback, if you think we should have a special meeting to do this because it's so important, or if you think we should have a executive session, you know, let me know what you think in terms of how to move forward with this. But I thank you. A lot of work went into this, and really appreciate your, your time and listening to us. Any thoughts right now, or do you want to just wait? Okay, so we'll, we'll wait to hear from everybody. Vice President Harvey?
Thoughts? First of all, thank you, Dr. Ruffin. But I, I must admit that I'm disappointed that the Board did not sit down and, like we had originally planned, to put something, a package together. This is great, but I thought that the Board of Education, the Commissioners, would first sit down and discuss evaluation, because we knew what we were confronted with last time, and we knew that that was not a good process. So I, I'm just, I'm sitting here, I'm not, I'm, I'm really disappointed that we did not do that, President Brown. And I'm, I'm just, you asked for feedback. So I will look at the package, but I think, you know, we're the ones that are supposed to say, this is the, this is how we're going to evaluate you, and then, you know, we have a meeting and we sit down and talk. So I'm just expressing my disappointment with that. So I guess now, and then presenting the, the timeline, I mean, that's the Board. In the past, it's been the Board that, that does that. So, so I will look at the, the evaluation, look forward to sitting and talking with you, Dr. Ruffin, but I'm just saying, I'm really disappointed that we, as a Board, did not sit down and look through the Superintendent's Evaluation and present it to you, as opposed to you presenting it to us. Thank you.
I think the, I think to clarify, my understanding is that we had a few meetings. This was the idea, and we were asked for feedback, and this was the feedback, and this is the result of the feedback. So the Board was involved.
No, they weren't.
Sorry you're disappointed.
No, they weren't.
But the goals, the timeline is in the contractual. My understanding, the timeline is in the contract, and now is the opportunity to, to really give feedback. So I'm very excited about the opportunity to work with Dr. Ruffin and continue working on the goals in the evaluation. And do you have executive session? Now you can do it.
Okay. Motion to convene into executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, employment, performance evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you.[1737.86][1737.86][music]